First thing we're gonna do is take roll call.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, roll call. Bob Sheen, present. Lilian Camus.
Here.
Nita Abbott.
Here.
Hi, Nita. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Awesome. Nice to meet ya.
And Jim Trompke here. Okay, so Jason is, like I said, he will not be here today in this session. The first thing we should do is reorganize. So we have basically four positions: Chair, Co-Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, and Pioneer Valley. So where would we like to start first?
Bob will start. I'll nominate Jim Trompke for Chair.
Okay, uh, we'll agree to clear. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Bob? Aye. Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Gims and I, so motion carries.
You're an abstain.
I suppose so. Okay. Next position? Are we calling it, are we calling it Co-Chair?
We're calling it Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, okay. Well, seeing, seeing Mr. Sheen did it to me, I guess I can do it to him. I nominate him as Vice Chair. Bob Sheen as Vice Chair. That's my motion.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bob, you abstain?
I'll vote for myself. I don't care. I'm not proud.
I think, I think you need to abstain.
I'll abstain then, if that's the way the game's played.
Well, that's the way we play it in the past.
Okay.
All right, um, Secretary?
Um, I would like to nominate Anita as Secretary.
That's fine with me. I'm already writing stuff down, so.
Okay, Bob?
I'll second.
So we have a second. Any discussion? I'd like that. It is a drop-in right in on it. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
I abstain.
Gims and I. Treasurer? I think Jason was, was willing to step up to that position being his Chair. He wanted to take something on.
Okay, then I'll nominate, uh, Jason Smeeville as Treasurer.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
And Gims and I, motion carries. Lilian, are you, are you still interested in being the Pioneer Valley Rep?
Um, yes, but I'd also like to do, after we do that one, the, um, alternate Pioneer Valley Rep. And, and Anita do that suggest. All we do with the Pioneer Valley Planning Rep is suggest the Select Board has to approve those. We just recommend. So yes, I'd be willing to do it again.
Any other motion?
Well, I'll, I'll move that the Board recommend to the Select Board Will as Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Rep and Anita Abbott as Pioneer Valley Commission Alternate Rep.
Are the two candidates going to abstain?
Yes. Yes, but I think we should do this in two separate motions.
I was just gonna say, if that's gonna be the case, then I will nominate Will Camus as the, uh, to suggest to the Select Board, the Select Board to be the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Rep.
Do we have a second?
Nita, you can.
I'll second it, sorry.
Okay, Nita, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye. Oops, I'm, I'm sorry. I abstain.
Nita?
Aye.
And Gims and I, motion carries.
I will nominate, I will, uh, I would like to recommend, or I would like to nominate Anita Abbott to be recommended to the Select Board as Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Alternative Rep.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
I abstain.
Gims and I, motion carries. Okay, now that we got that over. We have some minutes?
Uh, May 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th as written.
Do we have a second?
Um, I guess I'll second.
Then, any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Uh, I wasn't there, so I don't know if I should really be involved.
So you abstain?
Yes.
Gims and I, motion carries. Meetings are accept, minutes are accepted. Okay. The next thing on the agenda, we want to schedule a workshop with the proposed zoning bylaw?
Do you want to wait until Jason's here for that, or?
Yeah, probably. I don't think there's any rush.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Proven, signed, amended SPR for 121 State Street?
Jim, are you sitting at the, uh, at the library outside?
Outside? No, I'm sitting at the library, yes.
Okay, just hearing a lot of background noise. Sounds like traffic. That's all.
Sorry, that might be my phone. I live on 202.
Oh, okay.
I can close the window. Is that better?
I think so. What was that, Jim?
So the next item on the agenda was, uh, proven, signed, amended site plan for 121 West State Street. I don't seem to have anything here.
Um.
It was, it was sent out late today in an email, I believe, wasn't it, Will?
Uh, yeah, Kathy sent it out then, but Ken sent it out first May, the, the next day after our last meeting.
Well, I don't have anything.
You have something from Kathy today? I can probably tell you when she sent it.
No, I'm saying I don't have it in front of me to sign.
You don't what?
I don't have it in front of me to sign.
Okay, she may not have, uh, run a hard copy.
As, as I read through this amended document, I, there was nothing that jumped out to me. I, uh, I have no issue with it and I would, uh, I would, uh, make a recommendation that the Board sign it as written.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll print it out, sign it, and then, uh, scan it and email it over to Kathy tomorrow. I did see.
Yeah, all, all of us, all of us do have to sign it.
Oh, it's set up for, for, uh, three signatures?
Well, it's set up for five signatures, uh.
Yeah.
So we, we will have to make an appointment with, uh,
With Kathy.
Kathy.
But we need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, we approve the amm, I'm sorry?
Approve and sign?
I didn't get that, Will. I'm, I'm sorry.
Approve and sign?
Yes, approve and sign the, uh, Second Amendment for, uh, uh, the site plan review for 121 West State Street Lot 1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Gims and I, motion carries. Okay. All right. Mobile food trucks.
Uh, Jim?
Yes?
Mr. Sparkle has another planning board meeting, and I think he said a little after six or something. I don't know if he wanted to jump to that one first.
Who's, who is this?
Mr. Sparkle for Kellogg Hall.
Yeah, okay, we, we can give him a couple moments.
Mr. Sparkle? Yes, sir. I am here. Oh, good, good to, I say meet you tonight. I don't even get to see your faces, unfortunately, but maybe that's for the best and everyone's account. I am, I am here representing the Granbury Historic Preservation Society, and we also have Gary Phelps, the President of that society, um, here with us. And I'm, I'm certain that this has come up to the planning board in the past, and Mr. Phelps was told to, to get an engineer, get a survey, and come up with a, a fully functional site plan that met all of the bylaw requirements. And I believe I have done that, but there are a few things that I wanted to go over prior to making a formal submittal to the Board.
Excuse me, Mr. Sparkle?
Yes.
Um, Jim, I'm gonna have to recuse myself because I'm in a butter, and I believe Nita is going to have to recuse herself too.
Yes.
Okay.
But we're not gonna make, you, you can listen on. We're not gonna be making any decisions on this tonight, so.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
But it's noted, you've, you've recused yourself, so that's fine.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Um, all right, so at first, normally I, you know, I bring up a, a little show and, and share my screen, screen, et cetera. I'm not sure that's essential tonight, um, if, if people have read the little letter that I sent, um, a little bit ago dated May 4th. So basically, there are a few things that I just wanted to clarify before we make a submittal. And the, the first is to verify that the, the uses are all copacetic. So we have professional offices, which I believe falls under bylaw 3.5.2, office building, community assembly space, which falls under bylaw 3.4.6, community center, and the thrift shop in the basement, which is under bylaw section 3.5.0, a retail store. So I just wanted to see if, uh, first, if the Board had any questions about those proposed uses.
The assembly space, before, before we look at that, you're gonna, we're gonna require that you go to the, the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
To see if, to see if those are gonna be allowed uses in that building.
Okay, so the assembly space and all of the uses need to be verified, or just the assembly space?
I think the assembly space, but I, I would have him check on all of them. He's the code enforcement. Have him follow up on all of them to make sure that those are allowed uses in that, in that building.
Okay, I will verify with that individual.
And, and as far as the, for us to look at a, a, um, site plan, we can only review what is owned by the applicant.
Sure.
Any other space that, um, is being accounted for will need to, will need to have a, a legal easement drawn up. So in other words, if you're using parking space that belongs to the, to the butters, then there has to be a legal document for us to approve the use of that space by, by way of an easement, an assigned easement, an easement.
That does make sense. Okay.
Other than that, other than that, on the surface, I don't see any, any, anything else that, at this point, that raises any, any white flags.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go to my, my Vice Chair and ask, ask him to, to speak to it, if he has any.
Sure.
Now, uh, Jim, you brought up a, one point I was going to regarding the, uh, the Springfield Diocese property next door. And, you know, we can, uh, nothing jumps out at me. Uh, we need a capacity that that building can handle. And, uh, then we can begin the process of, uh, approval or review process through all the town departments and as well our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Rep, who I believe I saw in an email that he's on vacation this evening. Is that true, Will?
Yes.
Yes, he's on vacation this week.
Okay, uh. And, uh, I, I don't know if there's gonna be the need to send this out for peer review or not. That's a determine, a determination we will have to make as a Board, especially since only three of us are gonna be voting on it, and, uh, the, the third voting member is not here this evening.
Okay. Well, fortunately, I am not making any engineering changes whatsoever to the site other than restriping the parking lot. There were just a couple other points I wanted to go over. If the Board didn't have further comment, is there more comment, or should I keep going?
That's, that's it for me. Bob, I don't know if you have any more.
Yeah, no, no, continue, Bucky.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, I calculated that the use planned would require 63 parking spaces when you go through the algorithm in the bylaw. And we have 65 spaces on-site available, so we actually would not need the diocese. It's sort of a backup parking in case, you know, some big special event, but we'd probably have to pull up a permit or have that easement in place. But it's not required, so we're, we're not counting on it at this time. I also wanted to say, I, was a little confusing to me. I just want to make sure that dimensional and density regulations, the bylaw, you know, 5.1.3.8, I'm sure you all have it totally memorized by code, of course. But it, it stipulates that the single-family requirements of the dimensional density regulations apply to this site in the Village Center District. Does that ring true to you? I just want to make sure I'm using the right dimensions.
Could you clarify? I'm not quite sure what you were saying.
Okay, so I, I wrote about this in my letter, and it, and it says, I determined that in the Village Center District, it states that the single-family requirements of the table of dimensional and density regulations apply to the site, which, um, are, are a little bit different. So, but they're not significant. I don't think it affects us one way or the other. I just want to make sure I'm applying under the proper dimensional requirements.
I don't, I don't think we could answer that for you tonight. We'd have to, we'd have to take another look and have our consultant review it as well.
Okay. And then, I don't actually think I have further questions at that point. I will go back and we'll talk to the Code Enforcement Officer about the uses. I heard that we need to determine the building capacity. Is that also by the Code Enforcement Officer, or is that by the Fire Department?
He may refer to the Fire Department for that.
Okay, we'll start with the Code Enforcement.
And so basically, we, we, we can't really determine a site plan until we know what the allowed uses, so that we can figure out what the, what the parking capacity will be, how many handicaps, et cetera.
Sure, sure. Well, that's a primary reason for my wanting to meet with the Board before making a formal submittal. So we'll, we'll talk to the Code Enforcement Officer and tie up these small loose ends and get a formal submittal in front of you so we could have a, a real conversation about a real application.
Okay, sounds good.
And, uh, Bucky?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you may want to start checking with the diocese regarding an easement.
Uh, we can look into that. Yes?
And the reason I say that is I see no way of accessing the parking spaces that, if you will, basically run east to west on the northernly side of the property, unless you have an easement from the diocese to be able to access those parking places.
Uh, I understand. Similarly, the diocese would require an easement from Granbury Preservation Society to access its own parking. It goes both ways in that regard, since it's split down the middle.
Right, and that's something that would have to be figured out between Granby Preservation Society as well as, uh, the diocese.
Okay, uh, I'll look into that piece of paper as well.
Okay.
Good, thank you for the details.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Now can we go on to the mobile food trucks?
Yeah, this sounds a little interesting.
So, I guess there's, there's one proposed here, here in the, the business district that they want to, I don't know the specifics of all of it, but three days a week, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
I was told it was gonna be at Dressel's Service Station, somewhere on the, their site. You know, I don't believe we have anything in our bylaws that comes anywhere close to covering covering food, fairly recent. But, I mean, if... I guess it would be good if.
Food?
What's that?
Excuse me, would that fall under fast food?
I guess it could if you, if you wanted it to, but I, I think it's, I think the fast food, bylaw was designed specifically for drive-ins, drive-throughs, like McDonald's, that type of thing, versus parking their vehicle and walking up and ordering a, a hot dog or some, or what have you. I, so, so the selectmen are kind of holding off on allowing the, I, I think the Board of Health has approved it. I, so the selectmen are kind of holding off on allowing the, I think the Board of Health has approved it, I think. The select board is looking for some sort of guidance from us. I, my personal opinion, right now, seeing we don't have a bylaw to address it, I would be more in favor to get some more information. Maybe when Ken gets back, he can give us some information on what maybe other towns are doing. And then, I would be of the opinion to say, let's allow it to happen for four months and see how it, allow them a temporary site plan approval. Have them come back to us with some more specifics on exactly where they're gonna park the vehicle, the trailer, the food truck. What kind of parking on that site is gonna be allotted to them. And then, let them try it for four months. Give them a temporary permit. It doesn't have to be renewed if there's issues with it. And then, between now and then, we get some more information on it, and maybe we establish a better bylaw around it. I don't think we should hold something up because we're not prepared for it. And I don't think it's that big of a deal where, I mean, these food trucks are all over the place now.
Jim?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Will.
There is a fast food establishment with drive-through and another one without drive-through. They both require a special permit site plan approval.
Well, again, that bylaw was written before food trucks were as popular. Again, I don't, I think we should have a site plan approval on it. I don't think we need a formal, I mean, like a hearing at this point. It's in a business district. I mean, I'm open for discussion on it. I don't, I think we need, I don't want to hold them up if it, if we don't need to. I mean, it's not like it's a... In my opinion, if they're gonna put some space aside for them and let them use it, I don't...
I think going back to your original statement, or one of your initial statements, that we should have Ken look into it, I certainly agree with that. As well as, this whole food truck craze has really taken off within the past couple of years. I mean, they're having, you know, entire parks filled with fast food trucks. You know, it's almost like what they used to do down in the center of Springfield, the, all the restaurants, we get together in the square there. It sounds kind of interesting to me, anyway.
They have them all over Springfield. You can go down on Main Street, they get a permit. They get a permit and they park right on the road. And I'm talking down towards, you know, Wausen Ave, the medical corridor. And there's several of them down there in different areas. They just park on the side of the road. People either walk to them, or they drive up, park on the street and go get what they want. So, they're not doing site approvals for them that I'm aware of. They just issue them a permit for a specific area, and the permit can always be pulled. If it's a hazard or something's not going. It's not a permanent, it's a temporary permit. Will, what were you gonna say? Any other information, or Nita?
Yeah, I was wondering a couple things, like, I don't know if it sounds silly, but are they gonna carry in and out their garbage? Where would that be disposed of? What's their water source? And I don't know if this is something we'd look into. And if the parking that is available for people to stop at, is it safe? I don't know, like, who would look into that, but I thought those were important questions.
Yeah, the first two or three questions, garbage and water, that all goes under the Board of Health. The Board of Health, based on what...
And you said they already approved this?
I think they did, yes.
Okay. Well, they're very conservative, so I'm sure if they approved it, that's great.
It's, yeah, they have to get a permit to even operate as a food truck from this, I think it's from, might be the state, too. I'm not sure. But, yeah, the Board of Health would definitely have to approve. I'm assuming they not only, they inspect their truck. But I'm sure they've got questions on, everything has to be self-contained. You can't bring trash, or everything has to be disposed of.
Right.
Okay.
I think it'd be interesting to look into what other towns are doing. And, yeah, maybe we need to set up a bylaw, but it would be good. I just, as long as it's somewhat controlled, and like you say, the Board of Health would have a lot of control there.
Sure they would. And so would the selectmen, the selectmen are the permitting officials. So I guess my point is, rather than to wait a year before we put a bylaw in place, because we have to do it at a town meeting and so on. I'd be in favor of just take a look at the site plan. Where they're gonna put it on this particular piece of property, and what are they gonna assign for parking to it?
Right.
And then, if we approve it, then send a letter to the selectmen, say, you know, we approved the site plan, and if there's any issues parking or otherwise, then you have the right to pull the permit and have them cease operations at any given time.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think what you're gonna see here is that there is a, we are a very minor player in this whole concept. And the major player from the town side is gonna be the Board of Health. You know, are they gonna have outdoor seating, you know, picnic tables set up and that kind of stuff? I really think the governing body, or the major governing body, is gonna be the Board of Health.
So...
That makes sense.
Are we gonna make a recommendation that, to the select board, to have the food truck slash property owner provide us with some sort of a site plan? You know, it doesn't have to be an engineered plan, but just provide us with a drawing of where it would be parked, so that we're sure that it's not blocking views, vehicle view. And the parking, they're gonna allocate parking off the existing site for it.
Right.
Sure.
Dedicated parking for this establishment when it's open, or when, you know, under business hours. I would have no problem supporting that. If it'll help save two weeks until we have Ken back, and we can bounce this off of Ken, maybe the applicant can get some of this groundwork done before they lose the, rather than dragging it out and losing the half of the season.
Right.
Will, how do you feel?
I think that sounds great.
Okay.
So, we want to respond to the select board, saying that we'd like to see a...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll send an email to Kathy and Chris Martin, and copy everybody with that on there. Does that sound okay?
Yes, that's to me. Perfect. Okay. What else do we have here?
Seventeen New Lovell Road.
I don't believe we have all the information. He was supposed to be sending an updated site plan. And we haven't received that yet, so we really can't do anything on that, yeah.
Is that for us?
No.
No, that's for, the old Wayne Blacktop on New Lovell Road. Was it northeast, northwest?
paving.
Contra, paving, something like that. The one that Charlie Ames was in several months ago.
Actually, I went by there this afternoon, and they were out there surveying still.
Okay.
So postpone the discussion to the next meeting?
Sure.
Kathy did send out a potential invoice for 107 R. Carver Street. Did everybody get that?
I did.
Yes.
For 107 R. Carver Street. Our invoice for all that we did. We sent that this afternoon.
So, the first line under service description in that invoice, "Site plan approval fee $200 plus 10 cents per square foot." Yeah, we held the public hearing. We continued it several times, anyway. We did not vote a yea or a nay on the project itself. We just voted to let the applicant withdraw without prejudice. So how do we collect $350 in that first service description?
We still had to review it in the very beginning.
You are correct. I'm asking a question that's nearly that.
How do we collect it? I guess the code enforcement officer doesn't issue him his certificate of occupancy for the...
Okay.
Building, even though it's been modified, the modified building.
Okay.
Because he never pulled a permit either, remember? It wasn't just the...
Right. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to invoice Mr. John Plasek, I believe that's how you pronounce it. The total amount of $1,044.32, invoice number 21-02.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lilian?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion carries. Now, what's the 250 State Street? Is that the Oz property?
No, that's, we just talked with Bucky Sparkles and, it's the old town hall.
So, the Oz property, they were originally approved for the full building several years ago. They put up half. The system was designed for the full building, for stormwater. Now they want to replace paving and install a quarter of the original building they proposed. Shouldn't we just waive this?
I wouldn't have any problem waiving it, because virtually nothing is, they're putting up, as you just said, a building of much smaller size. They've done the stormwater management calculations.
Nita, are you aware of what we're referring to?
The Oz property?
Yes.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yes. So, the original permit was for twice the size of the building that's there now. And then, for some reason, during construction, they decided, obviously because of cost, the economy, whatever was going on at that time, they were only gonna put up half of what they originally asked for. So now, it was kind of constructed a little on the funny side. They divided it in half the long way, so it looked like a salt box, if you will. Now they want to complete one quarter of the building on the backside, the back quarter. And they're not adding any, they're not adding any impervious surface. So they're not increasing stormwater. They're not increasing staff. They're not decreasing parking. I think it's just, I think we should, in my opinion, we should just waive it and let them go forward with it, as is. Just waive the site plan approval.
I mean, that makes sense. It's smaller than what they originally intended.
Will, you have any input on that?
I'm kind of wondering why we're waiving, and why we're even involved. Is it something that we need to be involved with, to begin with?
Well, probably not. Although the original permit expired, that's probably what triggered it, you know, thinking that they had to do that. But I think we should just waive the site plan approval process and grant them the go-ahead.
Well, if we do that, we're gonna have to say why, and if somebody else comes along and wants to add on a small addition and doesn't even come before us.
Well, again, that's, so, you're right. We have to give our reasoning why. And the reason, and it's within our right to waive. And I think it's in everybody's best interest to waive it. Why put extra burden and time going through the process when it was already done once? So, I guess when Ken gets back, we can have him write up a decision on it that we're waiving the site plan approval process based on X, Y, and Z. It was previously approved. Nothing else has changed. They're still, their calculations meet the requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So why don't we wait until Ken gets back? We can have further discussion on it and get some input from Ken at the same time.
Sounds good.
Okay, what else do we have?
Do you want to just quickly go over the open action items? We only have four of them.
Please do.
Prepare an amended site plan approval for 121 West Street for the board's signature. That was Ken, and that was completed. And then he was supposed to... And then he was supposed to send a presentation from our last meeting, and he did that. Did everybody get that?
I saw something.
He sent that at the same time, at the site plan approval. In the same meeting. And Nita, I believe I sent that to you.
Yes.
Okay. Last thing, Jim signed the Turley publication invoice.
Yes.
You did that?
Yes.
Okay. Price is over. That's it. Oh, wait, no, one more. Jim, you were to sign the 39 West State Street response to the select board?
What again?
You were supposed to sign our written response to the select board for 39 West State Street, AJ's.
Yes, yeah, that's all said.
Okay, so you signed that. Okay.
Okay, well, we, Kathy Leonard just sent an email regarding the Ed Oz property. And it, it's the original le, letter from the building inspector dated May 4th, 2021, regarding the permit application. The letter reads, greetings, I've received the building permit application from U.S. Builders, Inc. for the construction of an addition to the facility at 8 West State Street owned by Ed Oz. I cannot complete the application, application or issue a permit because I believe they need to complete a site plan review for the proposed work. Signed, Greg Briggs.
And that, and he spoke to me about that. What he wants from us is a, is a, is a go-ahead.
Greg Briggs, you're speaking, spoke to you about that? Okay. Okay.
Similar to a couple of other things. He just wants it formal, that it didn't require a site plan, or, or it does require a site plan, that's all.
Okay.
He just wants a formal letter.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, Nita, what did you think?
I thought it was really fun.
Yeah, you're in it, you're in it for the long haul.
Yeah.
Here's the... Before we adjourn though, Bob, there, Ken sent out a letter or a statement. He's waiting to see what, what Baker's going to do if, if we're going to have to resume in-person meetings.
Yes.
So, after, I don't know if that's, I don't know when that'll come out, if it, if it's going to be a statement that comes out after this weekend or prior to, or at all. I don't know how everybody feels about that after this weekend.
And will we meet in the old, in the old library? Is that where we meet?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The, and also Ken referred in that letter that maybe town, town council has already received word from within the state as to what's going on with that.
And I would, I would think we'd get some sort of direction from the select board, from Chris Martin.
Yeah. Right.
And if they, I'm, I'm here at the, the library at every, every meeting anyway to get the paperwork. And if they, they list the, or they, they, they mandate that we go back, then, then we have to go back. If they don't, and those that want to, I'll, I'll be here to open up on every meeting. So, if any of you feel like you want to come back and do it in person, I'll be here. And if you like doing it this way, which I don't blame you if you do, it's a lot of, I'd be able to do it from your, your home office. So. Okay, with that being said, Bob made a, a motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Bob?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Nita?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Welcome aboard, Nita.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone, and...